I got the letter from the county attorney's. He said he asked me, yeah, he's a real estate agent. I don't think he's done it. But we'll, we'll do it. We'll see. You remember? I have the address. I didn't know that. I didn't know. I didn't have the receipt.
That was great, John. I said it was great.
Do we have a number? We're recording now. We had one. We had. You did? Yeah.
Harold was coming to the convention. We get out of the car. Rose is just one of the first. All here, correct?
You got the name of the place?
He should be down.
Absolutely. Tell me. Tell me the day of order.
Yep. Here you come.
Here you come. That was it.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started. It's five o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four City Council Work Session. As did everyone, please, silence all electronic devices. I'm moving right into our agenda. IMA is a Western Electric update. We'll refer Craig Honeycomb, our city manager, and Gia Sinet, I guess. Is that right, Eric?
Yes, sir. The city councils are giving, uh, city councils where we've been working, we give Centec, uh, which is a, uh, uh, we were working with Gia Centec, uh, to, uh, help us look at strategies moving forward with Western Electric. And the city councils where, uh, it is very complicated and, and that is children and I do apologize.
All the electronic devices. I didn't hear that announcement.
So, um, but, uh, we've been working with Gia Centec and they have a longstanding relationship with the D O. So sorry, um, I gotta turn it back. I'm sorry about that. Um, uh, I'm sorry.
It's a long standing.
We have that longstanding relationship with the D O V and also with D E Q and also with regulatory agencies looking at cleanup. And then city councils where there's a lot going on at the site with the being in private hands. Um, this is a priority for East Burlington. It's also a priority for, uh, the city to make sure something is done with that site and it is done right. Uh, so we've been working with them and, uh, we are hoping that this relationship will help the project and process move forward better and in a more smoother manner.
And from a strategy standpoint, I think it's fair to state that the strategy is just how to deal with Department of Defense and D E Q, um, to be sure that we are getting the best end result we can hope to get.
Right.
As opposed to a strategy of what we can do with that property because we have nothing to do with that property.
Right.
So this is just strategic from us, uh, to be sure we can navigate through a very complicated issue and still have some, um, level of control or input as to what the final products will be.
And we do, we are supposed to have somebody from Gia Centec on, um, and we're still trying to work on that. If council wants, we can go to item B and then come back and get them back on if there's any specific questions we need to ask them, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Yep, that'd be fine.
Okay.
So we'll, uh, put that on pause. We'll move to item B, which is Burlington Downtown Corporation's annual report. This time we'll recognize Eric Meadows, our downtown manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. You got it, Tom?
I got it.
Thank you.
I got you giving this one over.
Good. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for being here. We are here to provide an annual report for the Burlington Downtown Corporation. It's actually two years' worth of annual reports. Uh, this is the first time that we have done this in a number of years, so we thought, why not bring it up to date with everything that's happened in the last twenty-two months that's been here. Um, we have a board of directors. We have fourteen voting board members. They serve three-year terms. They're eligible for up to three consecutive terms. And we've really worked hard this year on rebuilding this. A lot of these came on in our new fiscal year. Um, this year, we've worked hard to create the mix that we made. We have real estate agents, bankers, lawyers, representatives from Elon, from LabCorp, from National Demand, our small businesses downtown, and we've really worked hard to kind of bring a great mix of representation to the Burlington Downtown Corporation Board. And I'll be brief with this. We are part of the North Carolina Main Street Program, which is also a smaller state, um, organization to the Main Street USA program. There are seventy-three cities, cities and towns across the state that are part of this project, and we are a Main Street America affiliate, member of this. It's kind of like a state association for people that do what I do. Uh, the Main Street America has a four-point approach, and this is what we've modeled the structure of our, um, committees after. So they put together economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. And when you bring those four pieces together, then you have community transformation. So we've used that as the model for the committees that we've set up, and we do work in each of those areas. We do organization as our executive committee and our board. And next slide, just a little bit about each of the committees. Economic Vitality does like market research. Uh, they help with the real estate downtown buildings that are hitting the market, helping to share that information, hosting tours for downtown, um, businesses to see those. Uh, any property changes, people moving, assisting with finding tenants for people, leasing space, um, business recruitment, pitch deck development, business support, networking, brand openings. Then we have a design committee, and they work on public art and murals for downtown. They've been working on a pocket park for South Spring Street, and they have a great design put together for that. And then they want to do some alley activation, which would be that alley that goes right behind that lot that they're looking at for that pocket park. It connects, let's see, Maple and Davis, and they're looking to do some lighting and some art down that alley to get some foot traffic to draw people down to where that pocket park could fully be when they exist. We have a grant committee. Um, the grant committee is responsible for deciding, um, how that program looks. I think they brought that to you a number of years ago and how the different types of grants restructured for building rehab, facade. Anything to help improve the look, the exterior look of the building or increase or sustain the tax value on the building is really our focus there. We have a hundred thousand dollars that are earmarked for grants that we offer to downtown businesses each year. Um, and they're currently beginning to draft a new grant program. They're trying to focus it more towards the businesses that they want to bring downtown. So I think in the coming months, maybe by this fall, they'll be presenting that to you all as well. Uh, our promotion committee does the art walk, the front street market and sidewalk sale, small business Saturdays, Christmas tree lighting event, and different forms of advertising, print, digital, media releases, and social media. And then the organization, as I mentioned earlier, is really the board of directors and the executive committee, and that's where we create the plan of work and the strategic plan, um, the bylaws, finances, that kind of thing. So now onto the fun numbers. And I know that green always looks so much more red again here, but it's an exciting number. So I'll just kind of go down the list. So over the last two years, again, this is twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four, so it's really the last twenty-four months, um, we've had a net of fourteen businesses open downtown, and I think that's incredible for twenty-two months. On the next slide, we'll go into what those businesses are. Um, the net jobs added, we've added fifty-two full-time jobs, twenty-six part-time jobs, and over seventeen thousand dollars of volunteer hours logged. That is factored in by like twenty-three dollars an hour, um, at times the number of hours we've had of volunteer service this year. Uh, with the public and private investments there, three hundred and three dollar, three hundred and three thousand dollars, sorry, of public improvement. We've had three hundred thousand dollars of grant money to put back into the MSD. And then in the private sector, we've seen three point eight million in investment into downtown over the last two years alone. Now, to give you some examples of that, um, some of the public ones that we've done are, it includes the grant money, but Christmas lights, decorations, our downtown enhanced services group that we've talked to about with our foot patrol and that kind of thing. Um, with the private, we've seen building rehabs, um, by people done on their own, such as LabCorp, National On Demand, First Horizon, uh, and smaller ones as well. Um, the MSD properties, we see nine facade improvements. We have a quick facade grant. I want to do a fifty-fifty matching, um, to improve. You can do painting, awning cleaning, window replacement on that. And then we've had fifteen building rehab projects that have gone through our grant program over the last two years. Um, back to the businesses, it's hard to read that, I apologize, but the businesses we've gained, we have those pizza, which is actually not quite open, but it's going to be open in the next few weeks. They are waiting on their oven. Um, in the Burlington Food Hall, we have Big C Waffles, Burlington thrift store, Crush Superfoods, D and J's Martinis and Memories, D and J's Bakes and Bites, Glossy M's Kitchen, Go Burrito, Grove Juice Bar, Lizzie's Playthings, Miles and Sweetness, Alishi Hibachi Grill, T-Rex, and the Wildflower on Front. If you're hearing new names, please visit our website and find out where these are and support our new downtown businesses because that's how we're going to keep them here and that's how we continue the revitalization downtown. Another interesting thing that we have now is Placer AI, which tracks cell phone data. It's not any personal information that's shared, but it tells us how many people are coming in and out of the MSD. You can set up your geoprinting to capture whatever you want within Burlington, but we add our specific to the MSD. It's drawn just inside the street, so it's not catching any traffic. The phone has to register in here for ten minutes or more, so it's not getting people driving through streets or anything. These are actual visits to downtown. Um, from that data, we've been able to glean, uh, what our most popular time of day is, most popular days of the week, most popular months. Um, so with the visits, we had two hundred and fifty-three thousand visits over the last twelve months to downtown, which is pretty incredible, and the average visit is ninety-four minutes. Um, our most popular days are Friday, Saturday, and then Thursday. Our most popular months, this surprised me, March, May, and April. Um, and then we also know where people are coming from. So we can see twenty-four percent are coming from the two-seven-two-one-five zip code, eighteen percent are coming from two-seven-two-one-seven, and we've got nine percent from Graham, eight percent from Elon, and then kind of a small mix of a lot of other things. Now, we've shared this information with our downtown businesses. This can help them with structuring what hours they're open, when they're doing sales, where they're advertising, who they're advertising to, and it's just incredibly helpful data that they haven't had access to before. Um, I'll go through these pretty quickly, but, um, some of the downtown projects that we've done, um, as we reported a few meetings ago, to our downtown enhanced services work group, um, which is our foot patrol and our cleanliness in downtown and keeping it looking nice and tidy and safe for the community. Uh, we're currently working with downtown property owners that have, uh, fabric awnings to do a spring cleaning. We've had a community member offer a grant to clean all of the awnings downtown, so we're coordinating that. Um, we're doing a planter replanting in early May. We usually do this spring and fall of each year, um, so that will be coming soon. It keeps it always in bloom and looking so beautiful. Um, we assist for the vacant properties in whatever way we can, so when we find out something's available for lease or for sale, I look down the list of people I have waiting for space to get into downtown Burlington and I try to connect them with what might fit for them. Um, hosting brand openings for new business, and it's mostly to help share that information and advertise for them. Um, Placer AI, as I mentioned, the foot traffic statistics. Um, as you'll remember, last August, I believe it was, we, uh, created the social district in downtown, and I can go ahead and warn you, I think B E C is looking at a proposal for extending that to possibly include brunch hours in the morning and also on Sunday as well, uh, possibly throughout the week. Um, we're not quite at that point yet, but I think we can tell, uh, the days and times that we needed, and we could use it based on our foot traffic data, and we've had no incidents reported whatsoever, um, from the police department. Uh, the Spring Street Pocket Park that I mentioned, so we've, we have a design for that. We're currently looking on ways to fund that. Uh, that would be in the four hundred block of South Spring Street on that open green lot right behind Impact Allenman's Building. Um, as I mentioned earlier, they're rewriting, uh, the grant program to figure out how to, to attract the businesses that they need to get into the mix for downtown. And of course, our two huge projects, the Paramount extension and the streetskates that I know you know all about. So I just wanted to say thank you for your support over the last twenty-two months. I wrote this so that I can get through it, but I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude for the opportunity of serving the downtown manager for twenty-two months. It's been a privilege to work alongside you and our dedicated community towards the revitalization of downtown Burlington. As you may know, my last day with the city will be next Friday, and while I'll be transitioning out of this role, my passion continues for the growth in the downtown, in the downtown and Everland Strong. During my time here, we've made significant strides in rejuvenating the Burlington Downtown Corporation, rebuilding its board of directors, its committees, and fostering active engagement in our downtown businesses and property owners. Our collective efforts have laid a strong foundation, and I'm confident that with the right support, this momentum can be sustained and amplified. I believe the first step in maintaining that progress is to facilitate a meeting between the city, city leaders and the Burlington Downtown Corporation board of directors. I think it's essential to review the existing contract as the main people in that contract that drafted it are no longer the key players, and I think that a clear understanding of expectations, especially, well, clear expectations are what we need, um, to move forward. Clarity will be key in maintaining the trajectory we've established. I want to thank the Burlington Downtown Corporation board and committee members. The dedication of our board members and our volunteers has been instrumental in our achievement thus far. I couldn't have done it without them. Thank you. Let's ensure that that investment of time, effort, and resources made over the past two years by this board of, the board of directors, myself, and by you continues to yield a positive result for our downtown community. I look forward to witnessing the continued success and growth in downtown Burlington, and I'll see you there.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
So Ben and I serve as the vice president on the Burlington Downtown Corporation. Just with Erin, just transitioning out, just wanted to thank her for her time and her energy to the downtown corporation. And she says we've got a really energetic and engaged board of directors that wants to continue this work and look forward to working with the right resources of the city to clarify and strengthen our relationship moving forward. So I'm available to you and Tracy. And I also appreciate your time.
Yeah, and I think, uh, Craig, if I'm wrong, but I think we're trying to play to get you there to talk about, uh, the next desk. Because to Erin's point, uh, when, when we created the model that we're operating under now a lot has changed since then, and I know in speaking to some of the board members, uh, they weren't aware of our current, so I think just clarifying that and understanding how, um, we envision that model to work and seeing what we can do from that is extremely important. So thank you, Erin and Tracy. And Tracy's had a lot to do with that, and we really appreciate your comments.
Thanks, Will.
Any questions on this for Eric while she's? All right, good. All right. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Great, you. Back up to your tour, right?
Um, just a few moments. I'm trying to get that.
All right, so just, and I probably will move on to, uh, item C, Police Department Headquarters Building Maintenance. Uh, Nolan Curtin, uh, our assistant city manager, and Craig Patrick, capital flag.
So Craig, fresh on here this evening. We'll be able to put some trim code, handle with our building services and gear, I hope it works. Um, so ongoing efforts to weatherize the police department headquarter building, um, you may recall a couple years ago, did a restoration. Last year, we funded some money for a window replacement. The idea was that, uh, at the time would be what would help with, uh, any type of moisture intrusion we can have. Um, further investigation, when we went through that, we realized that it wasn't the windows, uh, that was creating any moisture intrusion. It was just needing a proper vapor barrier on the building. Um, so there was only a soft lip of building, but over time, um, due to deterioration and aging, uh, just of the function, it should have. So, um, what, what we've done is we've reached out to a couple firms, and the, um, the one firm that we've been working with, uh, Trim Code, and they have identified a seal code that you can put on the existing, uh, exterior of the near the building that's provided ten to fifteen year life, um, and is, based on our analysis, the most cost-effective solution to go forward with. So we had two hundred and seventy-five budgeted last year with the windows. We don't need to replace the windows, but we do need to add some money to that budget so that we can do the seal heading. Uh, it'll take about six to eight months to get that done. Um, so what we're asking for tonight is to be able to add a budget amendment tomorrow night to the council, uh, agenda, um, for an additional eight hundred and twenty-three thousand so we can do this, uh, seal heading properly, and that includes contingency months.
And this will last how long?
Hold up, Trim Code, uh, what I've, what I've heard with ten to fifteen.
Yeah, your solution's about ten to fifteen years. Um, typically in the industry, you need to waterproof, weatherproof the building anyways every ten to fifteen years. Obviously, we know that's optimistic. Um, that's the, the scope here, wouldn't until the comprehensive facade repairs and then the weatherproofing of the building.
And from a performance warranty standpoint, what would that look like?
Your material warranty, the twelve-year warranty.
Any, any other questions? So is that just like a, a liquid coat or?
It's an elastomeric breathable coating. Um, it expands and contracts with the contraction of the building as well.
Yeah.
Spray it. This is roll applied. On a, a really large facade, you could spray a primer after your application with roll applied.
Can you give us some examples of where you use this at, simply like facilities?
LabCorp, um, Allenman's Regional Hospital, we've done all their roofing and waterproofing over the years. We've done some there. Um, UNC Health, we've done some there. Um, I brought up with Nolan, um, if anybody's familiar with Surrey County, they've got the historic courthouse up there. Uh, we restored the entire facade on that building, and a lot of that application was this exact product as well. But we did use that product. We used a clear sidelane repellent, so again, the whole entire building was waterproof.
Any other questions? Bob, here. So we're looking for, uh, a legitimate.
Yes, sir.
Eight, one, three, seven.
Yeah. There, you know, discussion, I'll put that on, I consider, kind of, more on.
Craig, let me ask you, with this process here, and obviously at some point in time, eventually that building is going to be replaced. So you believe that this process then, that Nolan should know of this, we've got another eight to ten years of, of service for that building?
Yeah, this, this is what needs to be done to weatherize. We got the roof, you know, restored that ball of sign on the roof. This, um, you know, is, the concept is prevents moisture, and so if we did use that additional ten plus amount of years, I know there's some bigger picture discussions, uh, parts could be had, but this is something we really need to play.
Right. It, it will allow us really to make decisions for long term, uh, but this is kind of an immediate need that we've got to do now because we don't have a, really a plan moving forward. We know we have a need for a new PD, but, but as far as a plan moving forward, we, we don't have one at this point.
Thanks. Any other questions? So we'll put them in contingency.
We can keep going, Mayor. And we'll, we'll have question like that, but it's on this wall. And our apologies for the noise in the lobby. There's an elevator repair, but it's here, and we'll work this late. It's like, we'll look.
Hey, attention, Bob. All right, item D, Rico funds, drones as first responder for D O R program. This time we'll recognize our police chief, Allen Baylog, and our parachute, Matt Law. A lot of horsepower down there.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's, uh, great to share the seat with Chief Lawrence, our clear partner in public safety in Burlington. So really what we want to do today is get you up to date on what we are with drones, uh, use in the city, uh, what the police department's done across all public safety spaces, uh, and then move into talking about drones as first responder. So, uh, it's a technological innovation that's really going to put the city, uh, in a position to provide better public safety service. We're talking in detail about that, what implementation looks like, and then, uh, some information about, uh, where the funds come from, which is specifically Rico. So Rico funds are from seized drug money that are turned over to the municipality to be reinvested in public safety, and that's functionally what we're going to be doing a lot today. A lot of duty to be had. So the history of drug use in Burlington, we've really been using drones pretty actively since twenty nineteen. Uh, they were implemented on patrol teams in twenty twenty-three, the twelve certified pilots. Certified means they've been through the FAA's course, they're licensed by the FAA to operate unmanned aerial vehicles, uh, and there are some state requirements for that as well. So the use of this technology for us has really been on the high-end, prior calls in particular, uh, arrests of violent offenders from mental health crises, where officers have to confront somebody who's armed with a weapon, uh, search warrant executions, traffic fatality investigations, and some mutual aid requests as well, that have included fires. Uh, so for example, the, uh, large warehouse fire that the city ran, uh, several weeks as that continued to, uh, burn. Our pilots were there with, with the city's drones and mutual aid requests to fly and show them where the hot spots were. We've also made several apprehensions, uh, in partnership with other agencies, uh, out in different places in the county. What you see up here is one of our drone pilots. That's Officer Baylor King, uh, who's flying a drone. And then down to the lower left, you see some drone footage from a training exercise. Uh, so this is a woodland environment. Those white dots are police officers, suspect, and a police Kena. Uh, as you can tell, uh, from aerial view, you can see exactly where they're at. If you're at ground level looking into a forest, you have no idea where anybody is. Uh, it's very much game-changing technology. So transitioning, that's, that's really about where we've been in the past, where we hope to go in the future as drones as first responder. So you'll, you'll have seen this in other large, uh, organizations in the western part of the country, and then in North Carolina, you may have seen or heard about this in the town, the, the city of Ash. Uh, they're really the first in this space. And then also the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office runs a drone as a first responder. We've been, uh, playing, watching them very closely to see where the strengths are and where the opportunities are. For us, it's a big step forward in management of, in response to emergencies. We don't know what police officers, we don't know what firefighters are getting into until they can see what's going on on the ground. We know that the drones, uh, as a drones, the first responder program arrive before police officers, arrive before firefighters to provide additional intelligence about what's happening on the scene. We know that that's going to help generate evidence, but it's also going to help with apprehensions. In other situations, it's got applications for search and rescue, finding missing people. Uh, you named it, it's possible. The national average for drones first responder is really a less than two-minute response time. Uh, we see that being potentially much faster depending on how far away it is from the deployment locations. The other thing that's really significant and nothing to gloss over is, uh, these programs require extensive policy and procedure review by the FAA. It is a arduous process, and that's one of the reasons that you don't see them just popping up everywhere. You have to go through, uh, approval processes for licensing. They have to look at your policies and your procedures and make sure you're going to be compliant. And of course, we've done this for a long time as it relates to how we view. You named it, it's possible. The national average for drones as first responders is really a less than two minute response time. We see that being potentially much faster depending on how far away it is from the deployment locations. The other thing that's really significant, nothing to gloss over, is these programs require extensive policy and procedure review by the FAA. It is a arduous process, and that's one of the reasons that you don't see them just popping up everywhere. You have to go through approval processes for licensing. They have to look at your policies and your procedures and make sure you're going to be compliant. And of course, we've done this for a long time as it relates to how we've used drones over the last four years and maintaining compliance with all state laws as well. So what would really look like is improvements in emergency response, better resource allocation especially. And Chief Lawrence will certainly be able to speak to that on the fire side. As it relates to first responders, I think specifically back to a drone response that we had recently, where they were looking for a man that was wanted for domestic violence, restraining order violation, he was actively cutting his neck with a knife, and the officers had to get apprehended. He was in a neighborhood. They were able to get the drone up and find him, they were able to confront him at distance, not creating a scenario where he harmed himself further or tried to kill a police officer. He was taken to custody. We had hoped to apply this program so that we get more good outcomes like that than other situations. Initially, the drone would be stationed on the rooftop of a police department with a two mile radius. That's what the FAA authorizes how far it can go. You'll see on the map on the right that that would get us essentially to the city limits of Paul River, north to the city limits, past Portentown, excuse me, south to the interstate, and west to Alamance Road. How much will it hide? Max? Four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet.
Correct. And those are all set by the FAA implementations. The drones are equipped with very sophisticated cameras that allow for zoom, you know, so you could potentially fly down south close to the interstate and really view pretty much all the way to the interstate, all the way to Gilbert County. So there's other applications outside of just that circular space that you see. We would use a remote pilot that would deploy the drone automatically as the calls came in, priority calls, the heightened calls where the drone deployment would be appropriate, automatically dispatch from the drone to those locations and then be providing real time intelligence in addition to live video to closely responding. This is a photograph of what the drone, they call it a drone in the box. That box is really a very sophisticated piece of remote machinery that houses the drone and keeps it protected from weather and elements, and then also recharges and accesses the base station. The pilot gives the signal for the drone to take off, the box opens, the drone goes up, and then flies to the location the pilot tries to fly to. The way that we structured our drone program already, we changed slightly to provide a once supervisor who has other assignments, but will work side by side, the drone pilot to make sure it's proper. Supervisor oversight, the drones being flown in the correct ways, equipment's maintained, the records are kept all sort of there. If you think about the way the department supervises a K-9 program, another very important tool for public safety that also comes with some risks, the teeth end of dogs are dangerous, we have to make sure that there's enough supervision in this situation so that it's used correctly. Turn it over to Chief Lawrence for them to talk through, you know, the fire response applications for this.
Chief, I'd like to, police department, this is a really new space for us. Burlington Fire Department does not have drones itself. We have historically relied on the deployable drones that PD has, as well as Alman's County Mercy Emergency Management also has had drones available for us as a resource. But this is really cutting edge technology that as we've been thinking through how this could affect our deployment of resources, it could really be of benefit and make our operations much safer. One thing to consider is, as we've thought through this, is that as far as response time, we have turnout time, so from our firefighters getting to a truck and getting the ear all ready to go out the doors, about a minute. And then our goal is to be within anywhere in the city limits within a four minute travel time. So really, from the time we get the alarm, from the time we show up at this, is five minutes, which is our goal. We're talking about police force that can deploy and be there in less than two minutes. And really provides our responders, folks who are going into something very blind, the way the information's been transmitted through them to just back to our folks that are in route, really gives them a heightened sense of situational awareness that allows our officers to make decisions about do they commit, or do they stay back and make sure they get additional information before they put our people in harm's way, gives them some indication of what they'll be looking at when they show up. And this information, this video feed can be sent directly to our commanding officers so they have that information while they come out. As we've thought through this, we've thought about how, what type of incidents would it really be beneficial to us for? We've got those listed here, as well as the frequencies that we have experienced those over the last year. So really, there's some benefit, not only from beginning of a seat, but to get that resource there early to give us a better understanding of what is definitely needed.
This really is envisioned as a public safety program, one that equally serves fire in the police department. Police department being in a situation where we can use the resources to acquire the technology, and provide the staff, but that our firm commitment obviously is, is that every time one of these things happens in the city, get the drone to respond, make sure our fighters are safe.
Do you have any portable drones that we have in the police department?
I think it's four right now. With twelve pilots, you said. Correct, yeah. And so unlike, you know, with a K-9, the K-9 goes with the handler because the K-9's only going to listen to the ball, to one boss. With the drones, we can pass them off. And so there's a rotation of that technology across the different shifts, not assigned to a person.
You know, the drowning issue, just thinking, that's, this is amazing to that at the night.
Definitely.
Especially without reservoirs. When you get out, that's, that's kind of my stuff there.
One other thing to mention too is that the, there are limitations from the FAA about how far the drone can fly away from the station, but it doesn't prevent us from putting in a truck and driving somewhere as it's needed. If there's another location, like Tanak is an example, right, if we go out there for something that we can do that very quickly tomorrow. These are some examples of the police department responses. What you see on the right are really some of the high end priority calls. We know that in progress calls for violent crime in particular are a very high priority for us. It doesn't necessarily have to be a violent crime for there to happen, somebody firing a gun in the city, that's another space that there's a lot of opportunity for us to apprehend those folks in addition to just responding to the times where someone has been hit. Very important mental health crises to be able to. It's, I'll speak from personal experience, that when you get sent to a call for service and you don't know where the person is with a knife, there's a different level of danger and there's a different level of risk than what's possible if the drone gets there first and tells you that the person is hiding behind a tree in the property. Or I don't see anybody outside, you're dealing with something that's probably inside the house. Does that make sense? Or a car that's pulled away. We definitely have scenarios that play out with missing children and elderly, that's a very high priority as soon as we can get there, especially with cameras that have properties that work well at nighttime, so you can cover a large area. It's not uncommon to have an elderly person with dementia wander off in the middle of the night when it's cold outside, and it is very dangerous for them. I'm really also focused on people who run hot from the police, people who have already committed offenses and flee from the police, need to be apprehended as soon as an officer. There's another nature calls that might be, we might call suspicious conditions where there's an opportunity to save officer time as well. Hey, I think there might be somebody over here dealing drugs in a vehicle. The drone has the potential to go there quickly and either confirm or dispel if that's happening. If it's happening, then the officer gets sent, if the vehicle's gone, there's nothing else that can be done, and we're done with the call, and we have diverted a police officer to you. So what our plan would be is to allocate a current certified pilot to the project and have this be their full time responsibility so that the drone is used as much as possible and that information is available to the first responders as quickly as possible. We do the initial equipment purchase, we have drug forfeiture funds. And I want to highlight here also that there are other requests with this, they're just not as significant as drones as first responder for allocation of the forfeiture money. There's some crime analysis software that we want to buy also so that we're more precisely solving crime. Some renovation of some of the spaces, that's about being able to fit the pilot, and then how does the rest of the workspace change as a result of having that permanent assignment there? We intend to acquire a SWAT camera, so if you think about an extendable pole, like what these guys would use to paint the side of the building or apply this really high tech material, think about instead on the end of it has a camera, and at the end of the camera, you can see what's happening on the side of it. Specifically, if you're in a house looking for someone who's wanted for a murder or some dangerous crime, you don't want to be the person who's sticking their head in the attic to see if the thing is up there. It's really dangerous. The application is there for other things also. And then lastly is, we've made, we have a junk facility that the police department and the fire department have used for many years, over ten years at this point. We periodically invest it, right? Council's been very gracious and allocated money in yearly budgets to do some moderate improvements there. We want to spend about thirty thousand dollars to put some additional equipment in there, do a renovation, really it's about ten years since any of those kinds of things happened. We see very fit police officers who used the least amount of force last year that we've used in about ten years. All of those things have come together because we've given them the tools to be fit enough to go out and do the job. So those are all the components of the process for the application of the drones, in addition to the drones as first responder programs. And then, of course, we do have the request, our pleasure request, to, pleasure in the request to allocate these funds if you see fit. We are both here for questions as you have. All this stuff is obviously there. Would it not be beneficial for Chief Lawrence to be involved in this in reference to the fire department?
Yeah.
With the drone?
Oh, yes.
Is that what we're talking about moving?
Yeah, they are, yeah. Yeah, we intend this drone as a first responder program to, the drone as a first responder program to benefit both agencies. We've identified both fire and police type calls that this, that this drone would dispatch to and again get there much quicker than either firefighter or police officer would have given some awareness of this.
Obviously, you'd have to train some firemen as well.
Well, I think that the control of the drone, the intent is to stay with the police department. The feed from the drone and the information would, would come to the fire department on those fire responses.
Yeah.
So there is that connection.
Yes. And Chief Lawrence has done a great job because he and I really started conceptualizing about this many months ago. You know, with this benefit fire, it would definitely benefit police, how do we come together to make sure that when we come before council, everybody recognizes that this is a program to benefit those spaces? I'll tell you flat out that the danger that's involved around the things that the fire department goes to, that are high end emergencies, there's always property damage that's at risk. Many times, there's life that's at risk. That's really where the first mission is. Is there life at risk? If the answer is yes, that's the call that gets the drone, right? It's fire, but it's going to go there first.
Is the drone just, it will be headquartered at the fire station itself or police department?
Correct.
So the pilot will be stationed in that facility?
Correct.
And the terms of the area it could cover is?
That's about that, that's about that two mile map. So really, it's about half of town, Alamance Road East.
From home base? But we put it in mobile action.
Then it could do the whole.
You're creating a, they're based to create a different two mile.
And there's also option in the future as we, as we grow this program for an additional remote site, for example, a fire station on the West Side panel, have this very similar box on the roof that could also be flown from, from the police headquarters.
So technically, if you want it stationed out on Church, South Church Street?
We could do that.
And you could probably get a large majority of all of our corporate members west and south.
That's a.
And it's on the east side of the other thing.
Correct.
And that is the goal. And we just want to try this first, especially with the Rico dollars before we start spending on crime.
That is the mission, you have to nail that.
So right now we're talking about a hundred percent Rico.
Correct.
Yes, sir. I will say, I've got appointments that fly drones for some other agencies, and he's saying what they're doing here, and he said that we are a lot years ahead of everybody else, got an edge.
That's where we'll stay. That's how, that's how the public gets the best service.
So for example, when the county's drones, sheriff's department, when they go out, I was involved with a senior that they got lost in the field, and they have, I don't know, the sheriff's department, they also have volunteers go with them, if they're not.
Correct.
And they, and they actually didn't take the drones to that particular area to go have a neighbor.
And I think, I think that their model is, works very well for them. Some of what the county deals with that's really different from us is just how fast the space is.
Right.
And the difficulty, they have significant difficulty having a program like this in a rural, more rural area. The fact that we're in municipality and the city is close together makes it possible for us to do this. But the main, the method that the county uses is exactly what our patrol officers use every day. So they have, they have that drone with them, and I watched them check it out this morning, actually, with Baylor King before he went out on his shift, and he put it in the car. And if there was a missing elderly person, he would be able to get there very quickly and put the drone up and help find it. That's exactly what we're doing.
And I think that's the difference too between the existing program at the police department and the one at Alamance County Mercy Management, the sheriff's office program is all those require somebody to have that drone with them, get on the, get on scene, get everything fired up in the air. The intent here is to have it for the most part automated, so as soon as that dispatch comes through, that drone's in the air and gets there before responders ever do. So it's a different, it's a different level of service that we give to this program.
So is technology then, if it's downtown area where buildings, vertical buildings, the system itself can get down in alleyways, for example, if someone's in the alleyway?
It's better off to stay higher up and then just use the zoom feature of the camera.
But it can, but it can do that?
It potentially could. The drones have very sophisticated software in them that basically won't let you crash anything. They're built like that, you know, they're built to try to mitigate the chance that somebody runs into.
First one hour, it didn't have that.
First generation, I would agree with that.
Too bad, they're just small airplanes. And I think the benefit is, I believe the camera on this drone that we were talking about has a four hundred X camera, so what the limitations are of the drone itself are, the camera much takes, takes care of that for you, do it through.
And it will come home as well, right?
Correct. And that's, that's one of the important features of it also is, you know, it's going to come back to home base when the pilot calls it back.
Right.
And in this situation, it will land in that docking station, docking station will close up, and it'll go to a charge and process, and be ready to fly again in about twenty-five minutes.
And so just to be clear, we have the pilot one, and then we also have four other drones. Is that correct?
Correct. They are? Yep, absolutely. You're hitting the nail on the head. And they really have applications for two different things. So I can tell you right now that the demand to be able to use the drone for other investigations is high. We can't have the drone as a first responder do anything but go to the priority calls. It's got to be available for the fire department. If it's a, I don't know, looking for stop sign violations, which I'll tell you, we would never do, that would be inappropriate. But if it was doing something like that and then it couldn't go to the house fire, that would be a serious misallocation of resources.
And so you're asking for, with this hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, you're asking for it to not purchase more drones, but to actually hit a team up?
There is, there is one drone in there.
One drone.
With the box, and the box is really expensive, as you can imagine, across all the obligations. Thank you.
Any other questions? So right here, we'll send you.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate it, yeah, very, very informative. Mayor, we can go back a second if you would like.
Although we're going to GIs.
Just in fact, it's not a good on the fly, please.
Okay. Item D, GIs dashboard, Andrew Shore, GIs administrator.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I'm here, the team just to present to you a GIs dashboard, developed summary dashboard that the GIs Division recently developed. Like you kind of recognized Jeremiah Jordan did quite a bit of work on this for us. So maybe this dashboard is really a summary of what we've taken in through our technical review committees, so any kind of city or private development. So what we have here is obviously the map, and we've got some statistics on the side, and then we have. And then we have just a summary of what those projects are. So right now, through this year, we went back to twenty twenty-one, developed our TRC projects. It's completely interactive, so as I click on different things, you, you see the whole dashboard change. So as you select different things, it's, it's going to give you different results. So you can pick by the year if you want. And then it kind of goes through the, the different development summaries that we have for, for our projects. So under review is anything that's in TRC that the staff is currently reviewing. TRC approval is just that, the projects that TRC has approved, but the building permit has not been issued or granted on that. Under construction is, you know, the building permit has been issued and it's currently under construction. And then completed is the, the CO has been issued on, on that project, so. And as you kind of click through them, you'll see that the map changes and just shows the projects that are, that were completed for that year. So if I'm just like, you just slide out, click what you selected. This kind of pie chart will show you for that particular year, twenty twenty-three, all the projects, and it'll just tell you how many projects were for either residential or non-residential developments. We have some static statistics here on these tabs. Just gives you another kind of a, a brief overview of what the residential projects were that account for that year. And then how many actual residential units were, for each of those developments combined. So on the left-hand side here with the name, if you, if you selected, did like a zoom to that, to that project, it is scale dependent, so you can see from the map, they have a bunch of bins. But as you zoom in on particular projects, it will change to the parcel location. And if you identify that parcel, a summary of what the project was will pop up. So give you kind of what was, what, what's going on with that project. And we have a, a link here to the site plan, and that will bring up another window and it will show the latest site plan that was submitted for that project. There is a, a side selection. We also have a search criteria. So if you knew the name of the project, we have much different search locators. Two of these are for address searches, Geo Locator, and then the development project. So if you knew the, the name of it was, it will kind of query the database and give you a result, and it will zoom to that project. And then again, the site plan.
So will that work for just active projects or past projects or what? How, how would you?
These are all projects going back to twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, both. Yeah. So, so these are all the projects that we have from twenty twenty-one until last week. And this will be updated weekly.
So the capacity is endless going forward?
Yeah, we, we're debating that, though. We're thinking maybe keeping them go to five-year cycle. I mean, there are some seriously problems that are older and still haven't been built, but it's, we're looking at a five-year cycle.
So if we wanted, if we wanted to create a statistical database on something with GIs location where maybe existing projects already complete, or could we set something up for that? Or is this pretty much locked into permitting and?
Uh, it's, it's, it's tied into everything, it's tied into our technical review committee and, and spend our building permits. So, and that's just things that are come through us and it's like more the high-level stuff. It's not kind of the outfits or anything like that. It's, it's the bigger problems. And so with all your selected, like, just clicking on the completed side, it would give you a, an early read from how many projects have actually been completed in the, in the pie chart.
That's really good information.
And just to be, we don't have it posted on our website yet. We'll, we'll be posting it, the link, the hyperlink somewhere on our website, so we'll just figure that out.
Are we, we're, we're going to get live?
It's live now. It's, it's available to the public, we just haven't, haven't published it. We'll be doing that shortly. Just wondering if someone can put it in.
Do you have a date that's going to live?
Uh, defined date, no.
It's live now?
It's live now, it is available. You just need to know what the QR code is. We're trying to, um, that with Beverly and Dana, I think there'll be a, a hyperlink on the digital version of the agenda of tonight's agenda.
Jamie and I were just texting about doing a public announcement, too, so we'll, we'll do something to push it out there and see if we can get a more navig, something to put out there that's a little easier to navigate for the URL. I'm not sure if we can shorten it, but we'll, we'll look at it and see how we can push it out.
URL, we could do a QR code, something like that. But we just wanted to present it to you before we went.
Any questions on that?
Your job.
Let me charge it. Really, really good job.
And hopefully we'll have the board accountable.
All right, great. We'll move back to, uh, and again, I do apologize for not giving Giosintec on the line to answer any of your questions. But really, the purpose of contracting and working with them is really to help us walk through the maze that is the DOD, and it is a private property owner, and it is the DEQ, and it is the Brownfields Program. All these things that are kind of tied in together, we don't have that expertise in on a daily basis. We have a very good understanding, but we do not have that expertise, and that's the, the purpose of working with Giosintec. Do you have that slide that we did on the? And, and one of the things we just kind of wanted to put up as well is that City Council has been committed to the Western Electric Project. There is a commitment to make sure that if something happens, that it moves forward. And, and I think it has been kind of stuck in neutral for many, many, many years. It's not because the city has not been actively trying to get something done, but this is just what has happened recently, that a lot of different activity has occurred. But again, when you don't own the property and it's in, DOD is responsible for the cleanup, and we're kind of the middleman on that and trying to be the facilitator, it is a slow process. But I, I do think the city should be very proud of what has been done in the past couple of years to at least get the property and the project moving off the neutral.
I, I would like to add, obviously going back, we started this project in this workstation in, in February twenty twenty-two, and then we started, let's, let's try to drive this thing forward. And it, it has been a, it's just been a maze of trap doors and deviations and things that are very, very difficult to understand. And how, how many pages was the, was the report that came back from the DOD?
Two thousand.
Thank you, Tom.
About forty-two hundred.
It was twenty-two hundred, Tom. Did you read all of them? I said, why? Okay. So, so I, I have to say, I had the opportunity to meet a couple of representatives from Giosintec prior to our meeting with the US Army back in January, I guess it was. And we sort of had a pre-meeting. And I learned more in that hour and a half pre-meeting than maybe the previous two years. As far as connecting the dots, because we've got this pocket of information and that pocket of information, but what sequential order do they have to go with? And who's in charge of it? And as this thing moves forward, who's responsible for that? And one of the other things is, I think it's important to know, and staff and I met with the property owner and their agents a month ago. We've, we've been very clear along the way with everyone involved that we're not in the development business, that we are not spending taxpayer money to enrich property. That's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is a project that is to benefit the community and get it so that the current owner or whatever happens will have the opportunity to rectify this situation for more than decades. But we made no, no misstatements about the fact that we're not in the development business. And, you know, we're trying to facilitate this. And this group really did a lot to help educate us. And I guess at that point in time, I think David Huffman did pull in a ton of outside.
Song song.
Yep. And it was, I hope staff agrees, but that was a really good meeting. And it helped us kind of figure out, all right, how do we stay out of these traps and keep this thing moving? And what questions do we ask? And we found out some, maybe some positioning that we could take or posture to be involved or we're more of a player in what the DOD does do. So, and not rely on just the property owner and what they're responsible for.
And, and I do want to reiterate what we have to respect to the website and appreciate Morgan's help and Pod's help, that really tries to explain as best we can through the maze of all the bureaucratic issues of, of who's responsible for what. And, and I think, again, the most important thing, at least in my mind, it shows that the city is committed to making sure that this project is not forgotten about and that it continues to move forward.
And now I think it's a challenge one for. When you've got the DOD, DEQ, and eventually the Brownfield issues, that's, that's a mouthful.
And a private property.
And a private property owner. On top of that, I still think, and a significant number of our citizens believe, it's still the same. Let's be honest about it.
I think we've gotten better now with the information that Morgan gave us and out. I think that was brilliant to have that information on there and to be able to explain it in simple terms. I think we're getting somewhere. But to your point, I don't think we're all the way there. I think that we're making progress.
Because there's a number of people in the community that's already got their visions made up about what it should be and what it could be. They have the right to be that way. So, I mean, it's, it's a, this is, this is real, real complexity at the best. So one has to have a name at the timeline. And I quickly say, but we don't know what the timeline is. What else? The timeline just to get the final cleanup or approval of the project itself will be fifteen, eighteen months.
Exactly. Maybe seven, summer of twenty twenty.
August of twenty-five, I think.
And the hot spots, the, the sole and groundwater should be completed, or it was the hot spots, not the full remediation, by end of the year, is my understanding of the.
I think most of the, most of the work for the removal of the waste accumulation pad has already been accomplished. I'm not sure if they have finished doing all the injection drillings for the vapor barrier, but they were talking that that would even be like end of summer. That they were expecting all the remediation work that they're doing in this phase to be completed. Not, not total remediation, but the remediation for this, this phase.
So we're very fortunate, if you'll notice, February, March twenty twenty-four, the last pump there, we're very fortunate that the DOD started an interim action pad to, to get at least that accumulation pad and, and some of the other, the data gaps that are out there. Again, those still being, that's kind of what we have going on. So we're going to be that much further along when the final plan is approved in August twenty-five, give or take.
And one of the things we're looking at in Giosintec to really help us with is the RAD group. And Morgan, if you wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I got an email from Mr. Edwards from the Department of Events last week asking for, to help with some locations to do some community meetings. And so that was a good signal that, that, that RAD group is, you know, on their radar and starting to move forward. So we're going to help connect them with some locations.
Tom, what's the long-term vision of the structure still left out there?
You mean the big, just structurally viable? So we haven't seen anything either through our investigations, through inspection investigations, or even that we've heard with, with the DOD through their reports, that there's anything there that is, poses imminent danger. So structurally, they're, they're still good structures. You have to remember that these are structures that were built during either war periods, pre-war periods, or post-war periods when the DOD didn't really spare any expense. So structurally, they're intact. The previous property owner took materials out of the structures for salvage that included electrical wiring, plumbing, HVAC and mechanical. So to, to be used as a building right now would be very costly just because you would have to replace all those components. But structurally speaking, there, there's no imminent danger that a structure is going to fall in. Even though some of the components, you can go in the buildings today and, and see, you know, it's the daylight up through some of the ceilings where some of the metal sheathing or something like that has deteriorated. But structurally speaking, it's, it's not as if it's going to fall in.
Yeah, that's the, they've, the current property owners done some work on some of the facilities and getting them reactivated to a degree, but, you know, it still needs a lot of work. Moving forward, so. So this, this document here is recent, one, a couple of weeks ago, I'm sorry, this is.
Last week, yesterday.
So this is our most recent piece of information, just to kind of show the timeline.
This goes on the web as well.
And it's just, I can't tell you the number of meetings and the amount of information that the staff's hauled through as we've tried to make, just facilitate this. That's what I saw our office to facilitate. That's what we're doing. Morgan, I'm not sure you have on the web, but how do you, there's a lot of people really issuing this still. How do you vet the regular citizen out of here when, when coming to these meetings? At least let them be aware that this information is out there so that they can see it.
Yeah, so we did some printed copies of what is on our website, and we dropped them off at North Park Fairchild Brain Center, we did them in English and Spanish, and a couple of other locations, the Senior Center, a couple other locations around town. And so the hard time, person that worked with me has gone back to refill them. And Fairchild was all on the level in English and Spanish when he went back. And then we did some stuff in the city works as well, it was in that most recently. And then John Burner has been working to take pieces of the information and make them into digestible pieces and putting those out on social media in different ways. So we've been trying to hit from all places without kind of over-saturating folks, but just giving them nuggets because it is such a complex issue and project, but.
So how many followers do we have on Facebook? Do you have that?
A's for that right now, I'm sorry. It's like a little bit of a.
How was the Jets? You maybe get them to like? I would suggest to maybe get them to, like, everything, to the churches, like, on Sunday you can get a mass, announce the information out in that area. I think that's definitely a, I'm a fan of the boroughs and parts of recreation. That'll be powerful for you, but for us, to get the information out.
Is it going on?
Thank you.
I still think there's people all over town, relatives maybe, whose parents or family work there, would have an interest in this, no matter where you are. I mean, quite frankly, some think that this particular site really drove the significant growth of West Burlington, so many engineers came to the town to work there. It's.
I will agree. A lot of folks who come from all different areas, I mean, even if Elon, you know, his grandparents worked there. So, yeah, I think it's more than just Burlington, it's a legacy, for sure.
Craig, any more on that?
No, no, sorry. And again, my mistake, I think Geosintech is.
Oh, that's right. Our next is item F, Works and Commission Report, Planning and Zoning Commission has two items, and this time we'll recognize planning, very connected.
Good evening, everyone. So there were two items that were on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda from last month, on March twenty-fifth. The first was a rezoning request, a limited use rezoning request. This is ten thirty-eight Rahut Street. The property is currently neighborhood business and the request came in for the applicant to change it to general business, limited use. The property is in a traditional residential zoning, future land use designation, so you'll note that the existing zoning is incompatible with the future land use designation, as is the rezoning request. The applicant has chosen ten uses out of the hundred and nineteen and change uses allowed into general business zoning districts. Seven of them are already permitted in the neighborhood business district, so they're adding three new uses that were not, that are currently not allowed. And those include, the new uses that they're proposing that are not allowed include a car wash or automobile detailing. So go down to the table here. So you'll see in the packet, very similar to what you normally see, this is a use table and the items that are requested are in black. And you can see for car wash and automobile, it is only allowed in GB, not allowed in neighborhood business, as is flea markets, they're also requesting that use to be added, and wholesale sales. The remaining seven uses are already allowed and those include computer-related services, convenience store with gasoline, convenience store without gasoline, and repair shops, restaurants, indoor and outdoor seating, and retail uses. Staff did recommend this rezoning request as it helps to provide neighborhood-oriented businesses to help serve that community and it helps to revitalize the automobile gas station that has been vacant and underutilized for quite some time. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this rezoning unanimously and as per this rezoning and the next one, we have asked to have this item placed on the May seventh council date for a public hearing.
May seventh?
Correct.
See, that's probably across from Austin Bor.
Yes.
And out of the non-uses that's listed here, you said that the car wash was actually, it could not be used for that, right? The car wash or automobile detailing?
Car wash and automobile detailing is currently not allowed.
Right. And they're trying to change it so it is allowed, or?
Correct. That is, that use as well as the retail use, I'm sorry, as well as the flea market and the wholesale sales. Those three are used.
Cannot be used. Wholesale, flea market, and car wash.
Correct.
So that leaves them, the convenience store, do gas or not gas, computer-related, restaurant and retail repair.
Those are ones that are currently allowed under the current zoning, but with this rezoning request, they're adding those in.
Those three we need.
It's seven total, ten total uses that they're proposing. Seven are currently allowed now under the current zoning, three would be additional uses.
In the neighborhood business, they're not allowed, they're asking for it to be changed so that it could be allowed.
Correct.
They want to go to a general business.
Yes, with a limited use request. Any other questions on this one before I go to the next?
See, we have these, that piece of property.
This property is, hold on. About an acre and a third. One point three.
So there's some limitations.
There's some limitations there. And I would also say, based on what's transpired on the site, there may be some limitations as well. You know, the existing building is up from the gas station, but there's opportunities for reinvestment to this site that will benefit the area.
It's a good traffic count there, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, the next one, I'll go to. So the next case that the Planning Commission heard was the amendment to a previous conditional business. This was the site, this is the site of Adams Towing. They had gone through a conditional business rezoning request that was approved by the City Council in two thousand and sixteen to allow automobile towing and storage and office and retail. They, and that was just for these three lots. So they are now seeking to expand to include all of the properties that they own, they purchased additional properties, and are seeking to enlarge their use. And in doing so, they had to seek an amendment to the conditional business to expand that to include all of the parcels. And took a look back at the conditional business, which was ordinance fourteen dash thirty, to account for the expansion and any other modifications that they needed to make. So those requests for conditional business rezonings go first through the Technical Review Committee. They review it as if it's a site plan and look at anything that needs to be deviated from. And in doing so, in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as you, you will see what the TRC approved, or approved as part of a recommendation. It was a very long meeting in two thousand and sixteen here.
I remember that, I think it was. Like yesterday, wasn't it?
Yeah, I will, I will get to it, but in other words, it was an aerial that just shows the boundary.
Wasn't me. I retired in fifteen.
There we are. So this is essentially their updated site plan to reflect the additional parcels that were added. Chain link fence was included, street escape buffer was included, landscaping and electric fence. They also made some modifications to the total number of vehicles that could be stored as well. And kind of full disclosure, there is an agreement that the applicant has consented to with approval of the city and the city manager for a portion of their fence and some of the landscaping as well. So staff did recommend the item to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The area is mixed use, future land use designation, this coincides with that. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six to one. And we have also requested this item be on the May seventh city council date for a public hearing.
Any questions on that? I'll get this back to you in a second.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Great.
Just a couple of things, Secretary Mayor. We are diligently working on the budget and working, hopefully to have that, hopefully we will have that as a presentation at our May work session. So that'll be next meeting and I'm sort of excited about that. Glad to get that paper presented to you. And I want to thank Peggy and Julianne and the budget team for all the work on that. And I also do want to publicly thank Erin for the work that she's done. And she's really been committed to downtown and she's really brought a new energy to the position and to the downtown group. And we want to do thank her and wish her the best in her future endeavors as well. So Erin, thank you, we do appreciate it. And then with some sad news I did want to announce, Nolan Kirkpin has, after fifty-two years, Nolan has, oh, is it fifty? Fifty-two. Nolan has decided to put his corporate papers in as of October one, or excuse me, August one. We're trying to adjust that as we move along. But I do want to thank Nolan for his continued service and commitment and hard work and spreadsheets and fifteen hours and additional project calls that we do have. But it has been an absolute pleasure and privilege to work with Nolan the last couple of years.
I do want to clarify, Nolan has not been. He looks at that.
I remember when he had red hair.
Nolan and I were Traffic Commission colleagues, so I've had the pleasure of working with Nolan for twenty-three years. So it has been an honor and privilege and a lot of learning along the way that you were the initial owner. So Nolan taught me how to read the capital.
I don't believe it.
So congratulations on that. That's good stuff. Anything else, Craig? I thought, I will, before we adjourn, I will, I did want to bring everybody to the one project. I think everybody remembers the Good Homes Project with Maple Hotel that we worked on some of our, I got a call from David Mitchell a couple of days ago. I told him, when you get closed on that property, Gary, before, please call me and I'll know about it. And as soon as he signed the paperwork to be closed on, he called it off. So they're closed and they're getting ready to, I think they're really just trying to work the staff on getting like a reapplication conference together.
He's already set up and scheduled that.
Yep. So that project is moving forward. A lot of work, it was, that one's been as complicated in a lot of ways as Western Electric. So we had the, remember the financing package?
Oh, yeah. Had to get a little power from the, from the.
That's right. So good job on that one. That one took a while, but it's, it's, it's a wish. Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll stand in charge. Thank you.